All righty, six thirty. Let's stand and say the pledge, please.
Pledge allegiance to the back of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It's good to see this big crowd out here on a pretty Thursday. If someone would approve our agenda, but I think we would like to make a change and move the Managed Meadow up to A and the Rescue Plan back to B. That's okay with everybody?
And Mr. Mayor, if we could also add a closed session, please, regarding property acquisition.
We'll add a closed session at the end. Everybody's good with that? If someone make a motion?
Mayor Gons, I'll move that we approve the agenda with the modifications.
Thank you, Jeff. How about a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Senator. Any discussion? All in favor?
No.
Any opposed? Do we have any announcements? Uh, let's see if we got a public comment here. Thank you. Yeah, thank you, Mr. Plaismann. Now, these, some of these. Are we gonna take any public comment in Rescue Money, the nonprofit?
That's up to you, the board, if you want to hear here, but that information now, we do have it on the agenda as a regular item. So that's entirely up to you.
I don't know how many of these are that or whatever. I guess we can just go through them right fast. If you feel like your discussion fits better in that, we will, if you want to hold off, we'll put you in the B of the regular. Uh, let's see, we'll start off with Peter Gallop. Might be saying it wrong. If you would.
You're allowed to comment after the discussion B.
Okay, absolutely. Yes, we'll make sure you get it. Okay. Yes, Karen Eve?
Yes, the same.
Okay. Uh, Michael and Ellen Winter?
Babe.
Okay. Uh, Gail Wright?
Hi.
Okay. Uh, Tammy Ross? Okay.
Yeah, here I thought a lot of people were going before me. Um, I'm Tammy Ross. I live on Schoolhouse Road and I'm on the Parks and Rec Committee. Um, we just wanted to talk about the farmer's market. I know y'all have heard a lot about where they'd like to be versus here, the new property over here on Hooper Lane versus Banner Farm Road. And we discussed it as a board and personally, I really would like to advocate for it to be at the Banner Farm property. It's something we've kind of all been planning on and researched. Part of our Parks and Rec master plan has it over there and whatever we end up developing that property be with the trails, you're gonna have to have a parking lot. You're gonna have to put restrooms there, electricity there. And it would be a great visible road for them and a lot easier access than at Hooper Lane, kind of down that little road. And if you put it here, you're basically taking a great few acres and turning it into a parking lot for the farmer's market. And granted, I'm sure some parking could be used, but that's a long walk from there to the rest of the park and so I think that property could be, or the Hooper Lane could be used for other ideas that we have developed in the Parks and Rec plan. One of them being the storage, more storage for the maintenance crews. I know they're pretty maxed out here with all the equipment we've bought and and the new employees that will be added on. So I know that they need storage and that would be a great place. It's kind of not in the middle of the park. And so even though the building you bought is not an eyesore, it still would be nice to have it out of the way. So I think that would be great. And there would still be room left over for something else there that we will discuss. But but anyway, Banner Farm Road is what I'm really hoping and it'll be a great spot because I don't, I would hate to see this new property just go to be a parking lot. And when we're already gonna put one over there. So that will be redundant, in my opinion. So that's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, Mark Heverly? Oh, me? Okay. Laura Moore?
Follow Tammy. I will read. She's a better speaker than I am, so I'll just read my thoughts if you don't mind. Good evening, Mayor Gons and Town Council members. I am Laura Moore, also a member of the Parks Advisory Board. Thank you for your continued support of Mills River Park. As I was at the park talking to Nicole just this afternoon, a gentleman asked if she was the director and thanked her for what she has brought to the park. He said that he couldn't thank her enough for the benefits this park brings to him. He also said that whatever she's paid is not nearly enough. So just a little story to share the impact our park truly plays in our community. I would like to bring to your attention this evening the newly purchased property on Hooper Lane. Our board has discussed this in length and is in agreement that this property would be a great location for a maintenance building, which is not only desperately needed for our equipment, but also obviously needs to be on the grounds here at the park. We are aware that the farmer's market has also requested space and were able to have Joe and Linda Britton attend our last meeting to share with us what they need in a permanent home location. This proved to be very beneficial to the Parks Board as we are all very supportive of the farm market and the impact it brings to Mills River. We all agreed that we would love to see the town commit to a lease for the farm market on Banner Farm Road, the space that is currently leased by Mills River Brewery. The market feels very positive about their ability to receive grant monies to make money, to make many of their needed improvements on this site. The ultimate goal in all of our decisions is to go back to the master plan and ask, how have the citizens of Mills River responded? When looking at the master plan on page twenty-six, section three, public input, we see the top nine responses for the future of Banner Ro- Banner Farm Road Park. And then the last paragraph on page nine, it reads, or on this page, it reads, "In addition to the already identified features, follow-up public and stakeholder involvement for the future park along Banner Farm, excuse me, along Banner Farm Road highlighted the desire to include the following features." And the first one listed is a community farmer's market. And then on page forty-six, section five, the recommendations and actions, we see a picture of the farmer's market and children's garden on the visual part master plan for the property at Banner Farm Road. So, due to the security of our maintenance equipment and the public response to have a farmer's market at the Banner Farm location, property that we already own and is very accessible to the public, I would like to make these suggestions for you to consider a parks maintenance facility on Hooper Lane and farm market at Banner Farm Road. As always, thanks for your time and thanks for all that you do for Mills River.
Good work. Tristan Cowan?
Thank you. And I'm gonna echo a lot of what, gonna echo a lot of what Laura said. Thank you again for taking this opportunity to discuss some options for the property on Hooper Lane. We recommend that the farmer's market be saved for Banner Farm Road property. We just think it's gonna be a little bit better fit there. It's already in the master plan. We already kind of have that space dedicated to it. In exchange, looking at doing a larger maintenance building facility on the Hooper Lane property. We also want to go through some other master plan projects, ideas that we could put in that space. And we're gonna reconvene on April twenty-fifth as our next meeting and kind of go through some other options. We want to take, take our time, do this right and make best recommendation for you guys. Thanks.
Well, anyone else with a public comment? Here in? We will move on and ask for a motion to approve our consent agenda?
I'll move. I'll move the way, approve the consent agenda.
Thank you, Randy. Second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Sandy. Any discussion? All in, all in favor? Any opposed? Yeah, no. Regular agenda, we'll get on with the Managed Meadow.
Mayor and Council, this item before you tonight is a follow-up to a discussion we had last fall regarding a capital project. Well, we're calling the Managed Meadow, which is area down lower part of the park that we maintained for additional open space. And I'm gonna recognize Nicole Sweat to give you the background on that, that project.
Thank you, Daniel. Yeah, so this came about during our normal capital improvement plan. We had planned to do the Managed Meadow section and then council had the desire to finish with the, the maintained open space. That's all in that same lower section of the park. So at the November tenth council meeting, council directed staff to work with UDL Engineering to come up with a plan to do the fine grading needed for that project. So we have completed that process, completed the permitting process. So Tom Jones here, he's developed the site plan and estimate. So we can, he can review that with you and answer any questions. And then you, all we're asking tonight is that if you all are still interested in moving forward on this project, that we allocate the funds and give staff permission to put this project out bid, so.
Okay.
I think they, I think staff covered it well. Basically, you know, we had a, we did do an estimate, kind of get the ball rolling in the fall and I've updated since to give your best, our best guess with prices, things have gone up since the fall. It may not, not surprising, but our estimate is higher than it was. But it's also based on detailed plans, comments we got from the permitting agency, the state, that's incorporated. And then recent bid tabulations where we go through bids of different, similar projects as similar as we can. And so we've got our best guess on, I'm just gonna come in here as the updated estimate. So basically just need your all's directive. If you want to, is to go out and get bids for the project, we can do that. It's below the public thresholds. We anticipate getting informal bids from, you know, qualified local contractors.
With the town being the way they are, how many bids, if we put it out to be, how many would you expect would come back?
You know, we would try to get multiple, you know, we'd try to get three, four. I think if we, we'll have to talk about schedule a little bit, but I think if we set the schedule where it's not a emergency, which we won't, it won't be an emergency because we want the seating to be done in the fall, right? So if we don't need the grading to begin until maybe late summer, I think contractors could maybe say this is something I can have in my, you know, on my to-do list. So I think we can get enough.
Anybody else have any questions? Not one more. Same way. Um, I can envision one of these days the state to straighten out that curve possibly. Is that gonna have much of effect or we just gonna change the entry back into that, that area in it right here?
Nicole asked me to look at that a little bit and I did, and I don't think it's gonna have a major impact on this project. I, I think I did look at it somehow. I wouldn't delay the whole project based on that state.
Gotcha. Anybody got anything else?
If they do a fifty-foot right away down through there for the road of Hooper Lane, how far over is that gonna affect the property?
It would just be hard to tell really, depending on where the, because we don't know where the line is exactly in the road now. Everything has moved around so much.
I have reached out to the Department of Transportation to try to get clarification on that and to try to see what the process is for us to formally make the request that they shift that road over and pave it. I've not had any feedback from them just yet, but that is something that we're pursuing right now.
I think worst case, you may have to move the trail over a little bit in the corner there, because you'd have to do that because of that project. And I don't say it really doesn't have any impact. The work we're doing is on, you know, inside the trail. So and you can see on that map even there on the screen that there's, the majority of that work is, is, is off the road.
Yes. All right. But no other questions or is for a motion to approve or deny this, even when you like it?
That be the proven, the sending out to bid?
Bids, I would think. It's up to council. It don't meet the threshold, correct?
Doesn't meet public threshold and you'll still, you can decide if you want, you could say tonight, if it comes in within, within budget, like in that case, the bid budget including, or you know, about the one forty range, you could say, you, you know, I'm assuming you don't want to go ahead and award tonight based on if you, if you get the, you could authorize Daniel to sign the documents basically at that time. Or you say we want to send out to bid, see what the numbers are and you can reconvene and cycle and award it, so.
Yeah, I'd like to see it go out and bid. I don't know how many bidders we'll get, but I'd like to see it go out and bid.
Yeah, I would, I would much prefer that. I'd like to have at least two or three prices anyway.
Would the bid include dismantling this sediment basin?
Yeah, they'll have to include closing the rest control measures when
when it stabilizes.
Stabilize.
Yes, I would for, to revisit those numbers and see what kind of response we get from bidders.
Sounds good. Yeah. So somebody wants to make that motion and we'll review the bids and then at that point, we would give annual authority to. Is that okay? Somebody make us that motion. We'll move on.
Mayor Gons, I've moved that the Town Council authorize Mr. Jones and his staff to move forward with bid process for the Mills River Park Meadow improvements.
Hey, second?
Second.
Thank you, Randy. Any discussion?
If they're gonna grade that down to where it's smooth and then it said in here they were gonna use it as overflow parking, is that not gonna put ruts back in it?
Be a question for?
You know, you'll have to be, just like any field, if you're gonna do it when it's wet, if, you know, that is possible, large, strong possibility. But if you do it in dry conditions, I wouldn't expect that to happen. But you're not gonna do a lot of improvements. You're not gonna try and park lot. Obviously, it's gonna be grass and it's gonna be.
It'd be on the same contour.
It'd be on drifts a little. Correct. But it is possible, especially in a wet, if it's wet, that you would get ruts if you use it for overflow parking.
Are they gonna have it blocked off to where when there's not overflow parking? Like if, for ball practices and stuff, are they gonna be allowed to park back there?
No, this would only be for special events where we're expecting large numbers of people that we would have controlled staff or volunteers managing that parking. So it would be closed for the general public on any regular day. But if we, when we have like party in the park out here and we know we have excess, if the weather's dry, we would use that as controlled overflow parking, but it would never just be open for people to park in unless it was managed.
Anything else? All in favor?
I don't know.
All right. Any opposed? And, uh, keep doing, take time, enjoy your evening, buddy.
Thank you.
Uh, we'll go back up to American Rescue Plan Act, the nonprofit funding request.
Council, if you have these notebooks in front of you, I want to pull those up. We've got some information inside that I'll share with you and the public. So last fall, I'll go back to the beginning for those who might be listening or are new to this conversation. The, the federal government authorized the American Rescue Plan Act in twenty-twenty-one and every city, county, village, municipality in the country got a portion of that funding. Mills River received roughly two point three million dollars over the course of a year. Last fall, the town decided to allocate a portion of that funding for three specific categories. One of them being the farm land preservation, half a million dollars, another one being land acquisition, a half a million dollars, and then one hundred thousand dollars for nonprofit requests. And the requests that we were asking for were specifically for one-time capital expenditures, things like if you needed a new vehicle or equipment or computers or something like that, not operational costs that you might expect that you might be looking for in terms of running a nonprofit. So back in February, we issued a request for proposals and we, we received eight requests totaling two hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars, two hundred and seventy-four thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars. And the, we established a review committee, men of myself, our tax collector, Councilwoman Nogood and Councilman Young. We met last week and reviewed each of these applications. Again, to the scoring criteria that were included in the original request for proposal, which there is a copy of in your notebook behind the, the memo. And within that scoring system were assist, uh, points based on the relative importance of a given factor. So for example, having a letter of interest and presenting just the budget itself and describing the organization background will worth very few points because they're, they're they're important, but they're not very consequential in terms of being able to complete a project. We place higher value on things like, are you partnering with another agency or is the cost being shared amongst others besides just the town? And then the ability of whoever's gonna be responsible for it to actually complete the project was scored or add additional points associated with it. So give me just one second and I will pull up the, the actual point values that were selected. That's all up, isn't it? So on the screen in front of you is a table we put together listing each project, the request total, and then the average score. Again, there were four of us and we all scored individually and then we compared our scores and created an average based off the total number. Uh, the first thing I want to say about this table is the application, the numerical value that you see is not reflective of the value of the project. So it doesn't mean one project is better than another per se. It means that the application was completed. It was, everything that was submitted was submitted correctly. All the information requested was there. Uh, it doesn't mean that one project might be better than the other. And so what we looked at was, again, the value of the, of the project to the community, the value of it being completed, the score of the application materials itself, because again, there is some, there is some importance to the ability of any organization to be able to accomplish these projects. And then recommended three projects receive funding at one hundred percent of their requests. And that was Blue Ridge Literacy Council, Mills River Partnership and the Mills River Farm Market. The Blue Ridge Literacy Council requested funding for equipment. For those of you who don't know, they're, they are an agency that helps folks increase their literacy, whether it be learning English or learning to read. There's a number of different things that they do and they've done some programs where they work with manufacturers in the county and have programs set up over lunch hour where, where employees receive up to three hours of training a week for a period of time. So they're, they're looking to do something similar to that in Mills River and have requested funding for tablets and computers. The Mills River Partnership, they requested a lump sum of fifty thousand to be spread out over a number of different projects, things like things that they normally do like log jam removal or educational outreach programs, stream back restoration projects. What we liked about that one in particular was obviously they've been around for a long time and they're very good at what they do. But they've also described in their application as leveraging those funds. So those funds themselves, not gonna be a hundred percent of the project cost, but they'll seek grants from other agencies to help match what the town would be providing. And then the farm market is requesting funding for, I believe it's a computer and then some document, some safe document storage boxes. The, are there any questions so far? There's a lot of information. Yes, sir.
Is it two seventy-four or two forty-seven?
It's entirely possible it's two forty-seven. But I don't remember off the top of my head. Yeah, we can check that. So those were the top three requests, the ones that are highlighted in blue, excuse me, green. And then those totals sixty-seven thousand dollars. And so the community center, we thought was a worthwhile project. However, the sole source of funding was going to be the town's funds that is allocated at ninety-seven thousand dollars, which would take up, you know, almost entirely the hundred thousand dollar commitment. So the committee's recommendation was fund the top three at sixty-seven thousand, hang on to that last thirty-three thousand and put out a challenge to community center to do a fundraising campaign. The town would match dollar for dollar, the amount that they raise up to that thirty-three thousand dollars. So that would get them close to the ninety-seven thousand dollar goal, but obviously not all the way there. But the committee felt that was the most appropriate use of the funds. Other projects you'll see scored well. For example, you know, to you have a Blue Ridge at thirty-two thousand, five hundred dollars with an average score of seventy-eight. The, the reason that was not selected was because that is for a plan, which is an appropriate capital expense. It's a one-time thing that you would do. That's, you know, it's perfectly normal. However, the, the concern was, once the plan is developed, what happens next? Is it going to be implemented the following year? How is that going to be funded? And so the committee just didn't feel a hundred percent on board with funding that at its full value. So that's the process we went through to get where we are. All the application materials are in your notebooks and we have all of that stuff in the packet, the digital packets on the screen right now. You won't, won't look at anything in particular. So your, your assignment tonight is to discuss these recommendations. Ask any questions you might have and decide if you're willing to, to fund these organizations at these values or if you want to request additional information. Or just table this and think about it till your next meeting on the twenty-seventh. Is there anything that Councilman Young or Councilwoman Nogood, you want to add to the conversation that I left out?
No, I believe you captured it accurately.
Harley, anything you have?
No, but it is two seventy-four, seven fifty.
Okay. Good.
So the north, south Mill River Community Center. The reason it scored so low was because this was the single source of it.
No, that was, that was a component of it, but there were some basic things that just weren't included in the, in the application. Something that if we gave them the right feedback, we're very confident they could turn around in no time and give it right back to us and we score it, but we didn't, we didn't get that and we were trying to move this process along. So we, rather than going back for feedback, we wanted to bring it to this board first. See where you all landed and then go from there.
There was questions on that one. Did they have insurance or anything, you know, on the building?
Okay, I think at this time, what I'd like to do is give the public that wanted to speak before come up and we'll give them what we did in regular public comment, three minutes. And we'll hear what you got to say about your particular nonprofit and we'll, that might open some eyes to something or whatever, you know what I'm saying? So if that's okay with council and staff, Peter Gallop? If you come up, please.
Thank you.
Yes, right ahead.
I want you to use your imagination for a minute.
Exactly.
Please. This is more than about money. I represent Confluent Charitable Trust. We're a North Carolina charitable trust. We are prepared to provide matching funds that you have asked for in your grant money. You've heard of Arbuthnot, Arbuthnot Mr. Fuller, ever, you know, the dome guy? Black Mountain College and Sierra Nevada. These are big visions and big ideas. The grant money here is a big vision. That's why the money is being requested for a master plan. And I can assure you that, that, that the people behind this can follow through and carry this all the way with your, with Bill Britton's help. But we're trying to, as the representative of the trust, I will be making voting decisions. I will be making voting decisions on whether to provide matching funds. But I need to see that Mills River is behind this and if Mills River wants to step up and add another marquee type of experience in Mills River. For whatever good that, that brings, recognition, pride, uh, expansion of whatever, participate. So the community of the Blue Ridge, their art park, their venue by additional part, uh, and, uh, arc, Mills River, no acquisition cost. That's a pretty good deal. So I, I have not seen the scoring system, but I think you've made a good decision. But I'm going to ask you that we allocate some money back to the Badger's program. Because this is, uh, this is more than adding square footage for a library or whatever. Everything's important, alright? But this is, this is in a different category. And I need you to use your imagination. I, I would encourage you to open up to this opportunity. The money, there are resources. We, we don't need, uh, you know, we can, we can make this big and we want to partner.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Yes, good, good evening. I'm, I'm here for, uh, in two capacities, both with, um, Unity of the Blue Ridge, I'm the chairman of the nonprofit. And, um, we are involved and partners with Unity of the Blue Ridge on this program. And I offered the grant. A lot of grant funding. We have, um, other partners that are involved in this that we are awaiting to get their final response because their process is much longer. The North Carolina Arts Council, the Tourism Development Authority here in Henderson, how we've been working very closely with them. And then Confluence Trust that, uh, Peter just spoke to. Um, I fully understand the fact that you say, well, what happens once you get a plan? Well, without a master plan, you can't do anything unless you that, because the town has an excellent master plan. And this, this plan is the first step we need to offer a passive park right away to Mills River. Better Farm Park is a, is a great, great plan, but as I understand it, there's no timetable and there's no funding. And Unity of Blue Ridge is offering eight to ten acres that you do not have, Mills River does not have to buy to turn that into a passive park. And the plan is to make sure we have trails and toilets and benches in the right places. Now, we're looking at funding to other organizations for, for, we're going to trail the rails to North Carolina Arts Council, the tourism, et cetera, to actually create the, the, that is amenities, but we have to have the, the plan first of all. And as you can imagine, it's a religious organization. They don't have the money to, to put aside for the town to do this. Uh, and then this would connect with trails that are already on ten acres, joining Unity's property at the moment, which is a little known public park, the Carolina Memorial Sanctuary. So we would in essence be creating at no land purchase cost to Mills River, a twenty acre passive park. And all of you know, I'm sure that this park here, this wonderful park here is oversubscribed almost anytime that there is an athletic activity or something like that going on. And the park that we are proposing and have been working on for years and very committed to, uh, will offer very different kind of experiences. And what, uh, Peter mentioned too is this particular proposal didn't go into the, uh, because it wasn't relevant, the sort of architectural, showstopping art that will also be in this park. Which I think will put Mills River on the map in a, in a lot of ways, because these days, specific art or developments is very well-known with Chiapas. Uh, I know that there's more money that can be allocated. The three that you've chosen are wonderful projects. I would just hope you wouldn't want it to own to those three systems to larger product.
Okay, thank you. Um, Michael and Ellen.
We made you for this opportunity. Ellen said I could speak for her, so this was a wonderful occasion for me. You're in Mills River for eighteen years, just turned it over to new owners here at half. Over that eighteen-year period, hosted more than ten thousand guests. Many of them repeat to this market and watch them come back year after year, as so many visitors do. Always looking for something new to do and watch them go off to the Arboretum or Dupont Forest or Chimney Rock Park. Wonderful destinations, but not here in this area. And so this park here has been a great location for them. And the unity park will also become a center, a destination with the art that's there, something really unique for this market. Something that will put it on the map and it, it is an evolution, as Karen Eve said, it's got to start with a plan, but there are multiple steps in place. And I think it would be a tremendous asset for this market. Thank you.
Uh, Gail Wright?
I'm still wanting you to consider that this is a place for people to come. This park, for people to come and have a heart experience. And I, I just think that's so important now in our culture and in our lives, to come and really enjoy the beauty that we plan to create. The spiritual peace and the love that we want people to feel when they come there. It's not, um, it just has the ability to offer them. There's a labyrinth there already and this is going to just expand it so much and create your community. And just a real place that people can come and support that love. I hope you'll consider it.
Mark Everly?
Evening. Thank you for, uh, thank you for having us and, uh, thank you for allowing me to speak. Most of what's been said, I won't repeat, but I will tell you my own personal, uh, belief about this particular area. There's something very magical about, um, where we're situated. And people who come there, uh, first thing out of their mouths usually is, it's so beautiful here. And while we're not really looking for a big splashy event-based, you know, tennis courts and swimming pools and movie stars and all that stuff, we are offering a place for peaceful reverie and for communion with water on a one-to-one basis. Maybe you can hear the birds in the trees. And third is a place to, uh, just find a peace and and, uh, joy. And, uh, I didn't, I wasn't aware of what a great deal it really is, but you've heard that already, so.
Thank you. Alright, I think it's through the list. Anyone else with a comment on any of these nonprofit funding applications? Okay, here in, uh, discussion? Thoughts, ideas, any of them?
Well, I'll say as a participant in the selection committee, one of the the challenges and something that we as a council really didn't take up on this matter is I, I think we're all aware that we're doing revenue replacement, so it unties us from a lot of strings attached with the federal requirements for these, uh, rescue plan funds. However, how much should we try to, uh, keep the spirit of those funds and as best I can understand, when Congress approved these funds and they were, provided to local municipalities, it was basically to help Americans recover uh, physically from the pandemic and economically from the pandemic. So, uh, in our first go-around of looking at nonprofits and these one-time funds, uh, there's excellent applications and excellent proposals. And I just, as a person on the selection committee, wasn't certain of what we need, what, what the intent of this council is, you know, do we really want to marry our efforts to the original intent of the funds or do we just want to, strike out on our own? But that's sort of one of the things that, you know, I would, I would hope that we'll discuss is, you know, are we, are we going to make any attempt or are we going to, you know, free ourselves of any connection back to the original uses of the money?
Any other questions or anything, or just simply answer Jeff's question? As to how we feel about how this money ought to be appropriated back out?
Well, it would have been good to know, you know, of matching funds and stuff like that on. There was questions on each category that we had, you know, and Daniel was going to send us out. You know, so we did have questions. We did want more input and it was good to hear y'all come speak tonight. That did answer some questions.
I think to Jeff's, I guess, me trying to answer what Jeff's asking or trying to get a idea of what we're wanting for our council for my part. I think the ARPA fund was to be put back into circulation, you know? It wasn't for us to sit on it. It's for us to spend it, is to put it back out. So that's where I'm at on that. As far as, I think y'all did a great, great job on narrowing it down of the list. I mean, I'm open to talking about funding more of these.
We had discussed, you know, the projects that weren't picked this time to maybe have them put in to where they do something and we do matching funds. You know, that's something we could consider. But we wanted to get the whole council's thoughts.
Yeah, we definitely have to figure it out either out of the second half money that we got up coming, coming in next or budget for somehow accordingly. Can do that. So I'm just going to ask a question. The unity, this is strictly money for the master plan is what you've asked for, correct? As I read it, yes. Do we have any kind of, uh, any kind of a notebook plan, a piece of paper plan, anything out there floating around in that y'all?
Yes.
Okay.
Uh, we have some plans, we have pictures, we have diagrams, things like that that we submitted already to the, for the development authority. Those were not asked for or, or things irrelevant specifically to this. Uh, we have a lot of plans and I mean, we would be very happy if the council or members of the council wanted to meet with us to get into detail of how we expect this to go, the amount of time and, um, energy and planning and we, we are already in collaboration with Warren Wilson College to do some of that environmental designs and things of that kind. That wasn't specifically required in the basement for the athletic area, but we have lots of information available. We could certainly show you sketches and, um, flats and the areas. What we realize that we need is that we really need to hire an excellent site plan. Make the most of this property so that we know the best locations for, because we're going to install outdoor plants.
Is this going to be open to the public?
One hundred percent open to the public. It is. That is the beauty of this, is it eight or ten acres that would be the bachelor for a passive park.
Is there going to be a fee for it?
What?
A fee?
Not at this point in time. I mean, if, if we can receive the funding that we need and then trust what that, uh, we don't foresee a fee at all. It would be a place where people can come very much in the spirit of the recovery plan to, to as, you know, soul recovery, uh, passive park to be in nature. Uh, we all know, I mean, I grew up in my family in front of those, like it, it, the land itself is something that heals. And that's what we're trying to make available is, uh, you know, there, there wouldn't be bald fields and things like that. It would be a place where there would be flowers and trees and there's, there's shakes and there'll be picnic tables and it meets a lot of the goals of the master plan and in terms of what the park is recreating. What's needed.
Thank you.
Any ideas?
I got a question for the question. Do you think the, are, were the three highest or the three green, like the highest in your opinion that were in the spirit of the ARPA funds of what we've received?
Yes and no. Uh, there's a good political answer. And again, and I think the town manager, um, accurate, accurately described, we, we have a ranking form, but it's more of just checking boxes that is everything in the application complete, did they quantify things? So it, it, it didn't touch on intent or and because we haven't had a council either and, uh, and I don't think it's any secret, you know, this is our first crack at, or diverting or identifying non, uh, nonprofits as recipients of these ARPA funds. So we're sort of feeling our way through it. And, uh, I mean, I'd love to have a ranking form where we said if it benefits zero to a hundred Mills River residents, it gets five points, a hundred to five, you know, something like that. But this ranking form that we used as a selection committee did none of that. It just basically said, you know, did they have a scope of work? Did they, you know, do they have a track record? Do these kinds of things? So it gave you a certain amount of confidence of the quality of the application itself, but what they're actually asking for, didn't try to marry it to any, because we haven't given any direction to staff or even amongst the council. So, but I will say for the people that have taken time out of their evening to be here tonight, that I was one of those that had trepidation about the master plan only because, you know, because it is a master plan and there was no assurance or compel, compulsion that they move forward after they receive the funds. So I would feel, I wouldn't want to be confronted by a taxpayer that said, what happened to those funds and said, well, it's a plan, but you know, turned out it cost ten million dollars and Unity was unable to implement it or, you know, things changed. So I, uh, that's one reason why I was one of those that expressed some trepidation. That was awful early in the process. The, the park itself ticks every box of what ARPA was meant to do. And if it was for the passive park itself, then, you know, I think they'd be the highest ranked, in my opinion, is just one person on there, but because it's for a master plan and that may be all it ever becomes, you know, because we can't predict the future. So, you know, that's why I was hesitant to just sign on at this point, there's the planning process of it, but that's just one person.
And we discussed, discussed going through it, that, you know, we were looking and checking off boxes as to what was in the application. Is how they got ranked.
What is our, uh, agenda look for for the next meeting?
The biggest thing on your next meeting, um, is we'll have regular nonprofit requests, which we get as part of the annual budget cycle. So there'll be a number of organizations who will be here to speak at that point. And I believe that's all. Oh, I guess Mr. Flywise from the airport will be here for his annual presentation. And the Fire Department will be as, as well for the nonprofits.
So y'all want to table this for now and, and look through it and seek more information or?
I think that would be good.
Yeah, I agree. I mean, if it's, it's, and I agree with Jeff and the plan is one thing. I mean, we have lots of plans here, Milder. We have parks plan, we have comprehensive plan, we have a lot of you know, if we're paying for something that we can see coming out of the ground is different than paying for a plan. You know, restroom facilities or walking trails or something like that. That's something we can actually see versus a plan that could sit on the, on the shelf for a while. So that makes any sense.
So. So can't remember who spoke. I think it was the staff. Is that part of this unity also?
Um, no. Um, that's a, a nonprofit that is one of the collaborators and one of the partners with this.
Okay. I just remember you mentioned that a minute ago. Okay.
And let me also say, we didn't ask for benches and toilets and all those things because we've already asked the Tourism Development Authority for those and we're waiting to hear back from them. And we didn't think it was appropriate to double them, you know, to ask you for the things we've already asked for. I will say if they come back and say, y'all get four benches, that we think will be well, we will be back
Okay.
To ask for things you can see testing.
Okay. Gotcha. Thank you. Thanks.
I would welcome the council as a whole to sort of take a deeper dive and face some of the same questions. And the other thing I'll say is that as a selection committee, we did offer up suggestions that we wanted to communicate to the applicants to either give us more detail, more information, or even to make their application better. And I think town staff's prepared to share that with them and I'd love to, for them to be the benefit of those comments and then give us a response and then as, have either a work session or something of this council to sort of wait through, because this is our first go around.
Yeah.
It's going to be, we're going to fumble and it's going to be messy, but I think if we can devise a ranking system and as a, as a body comfortable with it, then I think if we elect to do this again with more ARPA funds, it'll be a little more streamlined and and it won't quite be so cumbersome for this council.
Okay. So, um, so do you need that in a motion to, would be table in this one? How are we going to say this?
You can table it to a future agenda or you can just table it. But if you are planning on a specific date, it would be helpful for that to be in the motion.
Do, as staff feel we can work it in the next one?
Yeah. When we, when we were reviewing these applications, we kept the running list of questions that we wanted to ask the applicants. But again, we wanted to bring it back to the full board before we started seeking further.
That's not, that's my concern. Will these applicants have time to get these questions answered and back and us have time to review them prior to the next meeting?
I can't speak for the groups, for the nonprofits themselves, but I can tell you the questions that we're, we're seeking are not overly complicated. I was asked like additional explanation on this. Can you give us a clear quote on that? I'm not, I can't speak for organizations, but I don't think it's, it's, it's not PhD or anything like that.
Have we got a question in there as to the way Jeff referenced it a minute ago as to the potential amount of people that could be uh, helped by this, with this monies that we would be or not?
We, we don't currently have a question like that. We can ask that in the, in this next round of questions. I think if we're going to do that, we should probably go ahead and do it because we were talking a little bit about if we were to do this again, we don't want to change the, the criteria that someone applying for, say six months from now. So I think.
Be nice to get it worked. To go here. If anybody got anything else they would like to hear asked? I mean, I know it's you to us.
Would you want to have another committee meeting and we can obviously have more information input now and sit down and come up with more questions to send out to all of them? To answer more questions?
Like a workshop?
Yeah.
I guess it depends on how many questions that's already out there. And if we feel like fits the bill, I guess. I don't know. I'd probably have to think long and hard just to come up with anything else to ask. I don't know. That might be, might be a good thing. I don't know.
Well, would you want to meet together and come up with more questions and go over what we have to send out? Or are you good with what we got or?
My preference is to share the information, share the questions that the committee came up with in reviewing these applications and share that with the applicants and ask for them to address any of them that they wish and then take those responses and their applications and sit down with them. I mean, because obviously it's our discretion if we want to then go back to them again, say
Okay.
More information than I think we can, but to help expedite things, I think if we take that information that came from the selection committee, share it with them. Then consider it as a, as a, as a board or a council, then see where that leads us.
Everybody on board with that? So someone would make a motion to table this to a, our, uh, next meeting, I guess, will be fine. And authorize Daniel in the motion to pass out these questions to all applicants. Almost like I'm making a motion.
I'll make that motion.
And I can, but I, I don't think.
I got it.
Okay. Somebody, uh, somebody finish that off and we'll get a second. We'll move on.
I make a motion that we send the questions out and get them back. We're tabling it right now. Send out the questions and get the information back and then reevaluate it.
And it's on your
And it's on our
April 27th agenda.
There you go.
Yeah, I'll be needing a second on that.
I'll second the motion.
Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Everybody's free to leave at once too. We're going, or you're welcome to stay either one.
Thank you.
Okay. The way you're eating. Okay, so when you get called up, we'll look at your dashboard for the financials.
Okay. Um, you have the financials from March 30th through March 31st in front of you. As I've been saying all year, your revenues are high. This is excellent news. We're, we're thrilled with the way the revenues are coming in at 95% of our budget at the end of the third quarter. Sales tax, interest on investments, permits and fees and tax collection are all exceeding our, our expectations. We are being told that sales tax and interest rates for our investments will be down next year. So we're very grateful for a good year right now. We don't know how far down. We just know to expect that possibility. Expenditures are exactly where they should be for the end of the third quarter. We're at 75.8% of our budget. You expect 75%. You could take just a little. So that's with the increased costs for supplies and travel and training. Every registration has gone up. Everything has gone up. Should be really, being a member of staff, I'll still say that. Should be really proud of where we are considering the increased costs. All right. Over to the past distribution. I'm still leaving most of our funds at Capital Management Trust where we're earning at the end of March, 4.84%. I can't find anywhere really that will match that. Uh, we do, do still have one CD for just over 250,000. That's at 4.55, but it comes due in May and I'm not sure. Um, none of the banks have been giving us anywhere near what Capital Management will give us. And as far as your fund balance commitments, that's really never changed because we've not approved any projects or anything. Uh, it's mostly your capital reserves for your town hall, your parks, law enforcement, your Powellville fund. So it's all committed, but you're not spending it at the moment.
Awesome. Any questions? Here and now. We'll move on to staff updates. Thank you all the hard work, by the way. That's awesome.
You're welcome and no report.
No. Uh, are late. That's the question.
So, um, let's see. Our report was for the end of March. And up until that date, we, we've collected 2,868,494.44. We have less than $40,000 to collect. Um, the collection percentage is 98.65%, which is still just slightly below 2021, but we're catching up. We're catching up.
Awesome.
We sent two of the seven properties that we sent to the attorney to be foreclosed on have paid just from the demand letter. So they saved themselves a whole bunch of lawyer's fees and one from last year. So three of them have paid out of the seven or eight and we're we're catching up. Getting a lot of older taxes paid too.
That's awesome.
That's all I've got.
All right. Nicole, Parks and Rec.
Thanks. Just real quick. Um, I hope everybody already has on their calendar, May the 6th is Mills River Day. And it's also the opening day of the farm market. So we're asking everybody to go hit the farm market. They're open 8:12. Come on over to North River Farms and we've got a full day, horse shows, tractor shows, vendors, all sorts of great stuff. So May the 6th, save that date. We also have our next movie night coming up on May the 20th. Uh, we did a Facebook poll, so the public could pick the movie and it's going to be Sonic the Hedgehog. So save the date for May 20th. I've been coming out for that. Also in May, we'll be offering a refit dance class on Thursday mornings right here. So if you check out our website, everybody can get registered for that. And then just for the public that uses the park, um, in the next couple of weeks, you'll start to see a little more activity on our butterfly garden and our managed meadow. As we work on the managed meadow, the days will be rare, but there will be days where we have to close the back loop and the, unfortunately, we can't let pick a day because it's very weather dependent. So people should watch our Facebook page and some things like that and know that there is a chance over the next few months, there might be a day here or there that that back loop has to be closed to be working on that. So that's all. And unless anybody has a question.
Michael, finance next.
Good evening, council. Just a couple, a couple of updates. Uh, we are officially out of implementation of SmartGov. So we're no longer working with our regular consultants to implement the, the SmartGov software permitting system. We are fully live. Um, we're actually getting about half of our permits right now online through and including online payments with credit cards. So that's a big milestone for us. As we dig into the system and, you know, get more experience with it, there's always going to be tweaks going forward, but it's been a great success. So we're, we're glad to get past that milestone. For any of the public listening, go to millsriver.org, the planning page, and there's a link to the portal there. Either file permits online or submit nuisance complaints if you have. A little bit bigger news. Uh, we did receive a zoning permit recently for a 117,000 square foot light industrial warehouse distribution building at the northeast corner of the intersection of Schoolhouse and Banner Farm. So this is the 12 acres directly south of Flavor First Packers, surrounding that single family home at the northeast corner of that intersection. No use is identified at this time, but it'll be the large building, car parking lot on the schoolhouse roadside. And then an entrance to a truck court and loading area off of the Banner Farm side. Um, and then a large stormwater pond as well, just because the site's going to be so built out. So that, that will change that area of town. Uh, we're just beginning the review right now. It is in the watershed, so that adds a little more time to the review as well. But just wanted to notify council of that. Quick planning board update for those that may not have watched, um, planning boards considering the bike ped plan currently. Uh, we also introduced the conditional zoning text amendment at the last meeting. So council should see that coming before them soon to set the public hearing. And, uh, just wanted to notify council that the planning board appointed Brian Ross and Jim Foster to the Land Preservation Committee. And then one last quick update. Uh, everyone seems to keep asking about the brewery. We're working with Appalachian Mountain Brewery right now on, uh, design for a permeable parking lot because they're also in the watershed. Just to provide them more parking for that site. Still no update on, uh, opening day. That concludes my update.
Thank you. Daniel, when you get called up?
Sure thing. A couple of updates for you this evening. First of all, regarding the budget. We are developing the numbers, getting down to the nitty gritty on that. Um, we'd have received the fire department budget. I sent that, sent that out to you last week, I believe. Chief Livingston will be here later this month to go over that with you. Again, announcement to the public who are listening or watching, on April 24th, if you represent a nonprofit and are interested in seeking funding from the town, that is the best time to come, April 27th. That is the best time to come, uh, make that request of the board. Uh, we'll be emailing, uh, past recipients of that information, um, this week. Just wanted to make that announcement. Uh, some legislative updates that might be of interest. Senate Bill 265, which is the Increased Municipal Election Participation Act, has cleared the full senate. And it has gone, it has been sent to the house for consideration. Uh, as far as I know, as of today, the house is not considered it yet. For those of you who might be wondering, Senator Moffett introduced a local bill affecting Henderson, um, Transylvania and Rutherford, Paul Cat, or excuse me. Yes. Oh, thank you. County which would move all municipal elections to even numbered years. Currently they're an odd number of years. Rational being that when you have national elections on even numbered years, you get more people out, uh, which statistically is, is true. So again, that has cleared the senate, is on to the house for consideration. Senator Moffett introduced the bill a few weeks ago, Senate Bill 317, uh, which I do not, do not have the name of that in front of me right now, but it is an affordable housing bill intended to provide opportunities for development to occur without, preempts local zoning authority. So it applies to properties that are 10 acres or greater in size. A developer could build affordable housing on those properties with no limits on density. They exempt from several other, um, traditional setback or zoning requirements. And there's one other, one other component to that, but that has been presented in the senate. I don't know if it's made it through the, the committee process yet, but that is something that's, that's on the docket. And then, um, lastly, uh, Mike mentioned the, the Land Preservation Committee, um, planning board and the Parks Committee have appointed their representatives. We have advertised with a member at large. If you know anyone who's interested in serving on that role, uh, please have them go to the website or contact Sue and fill out an application. We'll get those to you guys in a couple of weeks. Uh, and then lastly, I'll just remind folks that we've got a closed session this evening to discuss property acquisition.
Any council comments? Here and now. We would like somebody to make a motion to go into closed session to property. Randy made it second.
Second motion.
Yeah. All in favor? All right. Any opposed? Okay. We'll give y'all a few minutes to say hey and bye and everything.